Are we missing anybody, Paul? I don't, let me see. I think we're all here, right?
It's here. Bill, yep.
I think we're all here. Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order if everybody's okay with that. I think we're okay. Welcome, everybody, to tonight's town council meeting. It's Monday, January 11 at 7:01. And, uh, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Michael Del Santo. Valerie DePaolo, here. William Dietzick.
Here.
Jim Morelli.
Here.
Christopher Palmeri. Christopher Pulis.
Here.
Tom Lombardi.
Here.
Bob Chaplinsky. Victoria Triana.
I'm here also. Could we have the prayer, please?
Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening to ask for your guidance and direction and to keep us focused, clear as we seek your help. Amen.
Amen. Would you join me for the flag salute, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. May I have a motion on the minutes from last meeting, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from December 14th, January 6th.
I'll second that, Madam Chair, Mike Del Santo.
Okay, Mike Del Santo seconded it. Thank you very much. All those in favor?
Hi.
Any deletions or, um, any extensions or, uh, or absenteeism?
Madam Chair, I would note that the minutes from the 1/4/21 meeting show I was absent. Um, I was late. I was about 15 minutes late, but I was present for the balancing. Obstinate to the extent that I wasn't there from the beginning.
So, Madam Clerk, we need to amend those minutes to indicate that, uh, Councilman Dietzick was, in fact, there at the executive meeting on the 4th. Is that correct, Bill? Yeah, the 4th, yeah.
Madam Chair, is, I'm sorry, this is Paul. As a point of order, can we just ask the council people and participants to manage their, their microphones on mute when they're not speaking? That would help me with, uh, making sure that I'm not having to mute people when there's background noise. Thanks.
Very good. So, let's all just check that and, and, uh, kind of remember that when we're not speaking. Uh, that'd be great. Okay, very good. Uh, Councilman of Communications, before we get started, I, I, I normally let everybody else get started, but there are a couple of things I do want to begin with. And the first thing I wanted to do was to announce that we, here in Southington, we are offering an extension on our tax bills until April the 1st. And so, uh, if you normally pay in January, uh, and you find things kind of tough because of COVID, we've decided to extend it to April 1st. And, uh, hopefully that'll help folks. And so, that's the first thing I wanted to get out there right away. Uh, and I, does anybody have anything about the tax bill they want to add? Okay. And, um, and the other thing I wanted to do was I, uh, I conferred with the Chief of Police, Jack Daly, and I asked him if, if I might be able to share some of the things that we spoke about. Uh, we had a meeting of just the council and, uh, uh, Chief Jack Daly and also Chief Bill, Deputy Chief Bill Palmeri, uh, in executive session. And what I'm going to share tonight are not really things from executive session. There are things that, uh, uh, the Chief and I went over and I thought would be informational to the public. And so, um, we talked about, uh, vehicle burglaries and thefts and overview for Southington. And I, I'm gonna go very quickly with just a few, few facts so that the folks will know what we're talking about. In, um, 2019, uh, we had 41 stolen vehicles in the town of Southington. In 2020, that number went up to 94. Uh, of that 94 stolen vehicles in Southington for 2020, uh, 55 vehicles had keys inside of them. So, half of the cars had keys, uh, inside of them. Uh, 10 vehicles had no keys. 28 vehicles, it was unknown whether or not the keys were inside. And, uh, actually, uh, 13 of the 94 vehicles were stole, were stolen from garages. And, uh, one of the points is that these are happening all over town, not one distinct area. Uh, but they are. So, the other thing, uh, that, uh, uh, the stolen vehicles that were recovered, uh, the vehicles were recovered in Hartford, New Britain, Waterbury, East Hartford, and actually, right here in town. There were, uh, nine vehicles recovered from here in town. The other area that the Chief, uh, wanted me to let folks know about was the burglaries that happened when people go into the car to steal and, um, items or whatever. And in 2019, we had 114 car burglaries. And in 2020, we had 410 burglaries, a huge increase, as you can, you can see. Uh, once again, uh, they happened all over town. And of the 410 vehicle burglaries for 2020, 227 vehicles had items taken from them. 166 vehicles were entered, however, no items were taken. And 17 vehicles had no entry gained and were labeled just an attempt. Um, again, they happened all over town, so we need to be diligent. Of the vehicle burglaries, 322 of the vehicles were unlocked. So, out of 410, 322 had access because they were not locked and people, the, the perpetrators just went in. Six vehicle, vehicles were burglar, burglarized while even inside an open garage. And vehicles were locked, and 16 vehicles were locked at the time, and 13 vehicles were damaged. So, we, there was a great loss. And I would just say that we are not unique in these, in these burglaries. We had, uh, we received some information on comparison of local, of towns that border us and, um, and some that don't border us but are, are similar to us. And each one of the towns saw a marked increase in all of these. So, it's just not Southington. Uh, it is, uh, around the state. Uh, the, the, the Police Department has engaged right now in, in many crime prevention strategies. I can't get into all of them. We'd be here all night, but, uh, they're doing a wonderful job. Uh, every night, there's a public service announcement just to remind us to part, uh, to lock our cars, take valuables out, um, and, uh, certainly don't leave our cars running at all. Park in a well-let area and secure our garage doors. Um, and if you can, you can certainly get a, um, a security system that would, uh, show, uh, your driveway and, and your car. And, uh, the current crime strategies, one of them is, uh, that we have, uh, Officer Christopher Laporte. Uh, he is reaching out to, uh, all of our neighbors and friends. And he is our, uh, uh, Crime Prevention Officer for, for the town of Southington. That's Officer Christopher Laporte. He would be very happy to speak with anyone who might have questions or s- suggestions. Um, and he is working very closely with the Neighborhood Watch. We have heard all about the, the wonderful Neighborhood Watch groups that are forming all over Southington. Uh, as I said, uh, we have over, uh, 3,500 people who have signed up to watch their neighborhood, and they're divided into neighborhoods. And so, uh, when there's a, uh, car that may look unfamiliar, doing something that would, might appear to be suspicious, uh, the Neighborhood Watch knows what to do. They call the police. The police, uh, go out and, um, and actually, uh, try to get there as soon as they can so that they can make, uh, an investigation. I would just encourage all of us to keep an eye on our neighbor's property and our own. If there's something that seems wrong, if there's a car that we don't know, not to get involved other than to give the police a call. They'll come out and they'll, they'll, uh, they'll check it out and make sure everyone is safe and, uh, and keep Southington safe. You know, the more difficult we make it for criminals, the more they'll stay away from town. I mean, that's just how it is. So, Neighborhood Watches are wonderful. And there's, uh, Michael Leoni has start, started something that, uh, has gone all over town. It's blossomed forth, and we're very grateful to every citizen who is standing up to be counted for the Neighborhood Watches. And, um, uh, I think that we'll see much fruit from them. Uh, they're working with, uh, with the police. They understand the role. Uh, they are, uh, uh, are great people and, uh, and we don't want anyone taking undue, unnecessary chances. So, I just want to thank, I want to open up the council. If there's anything else that you feel that would be important, that you felt, that feel that you could share with the public, you know, but we had, uh, a safety executive session, and we were not allowed to speak what happened from that, uh, at this time. But, uh, the overview that, uh, the Chief provided for us tonight, uh, was, uh, pretty compact and, and very clear on what's going on. So, I don't know if anybody has anything they want to add? Yeah, Chris Palmeri.
Thank you. Um, you know, I, I said, um, especially after the, the facts that you laid out tonight, um, that the Chief provided. I, I didn't think it was possible to be more impressed, honestly, with, with the work of our department. But they, um, the confidence I have in them, like I said, it's, it's grown exponentially just because, um, of the way they laid out everything and how they're handling the situations and looking out for all of our residents. So, um, a- again, all, to all our police officers, um, just want to offer them, um, true appreciation for everything they do each and every day. Um, so, it really, it really means a lot. If, if I could also, before the meeting gets too far, it, and I actually kind of want to tie it into, to what we just said, if I could just make a quick statement.
Sure.
Um, I, I, I just want to share with everyone, I, like so many others, was shocked, appalled, saddened, embarrassed by the events in our nation's capital last week. Um, while we are all entitled to our own political beliefs, I believe we need to express them in a dignified, respectful manner. And unfortunately, that's not what we saw unfold before us all on TV last week. Um, so, in light of the riots resulting in the loss of life, I would like to ask for a moment of silence, if that's okay with you, in honor of those that lost their life, especially, um, the police officer at the Capitol that lost his life in the line of duty. So, if that's okay with you, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence.
And I, I appreciate that. Right now, why don't we just take a moment of silence and, uh, just, uh, pray or think on, uh, how, um, devastating that all was? So, let's just take a, a moment, everybody, right now. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. Thank you.
Very important. Thank you, Chris. Very good.
Madam Chair?
Yes, whose hand is up? Oh, oh, Tom. Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Palmeri. Very nice words there. Um, I just want to highlight something very brief that, that I took away from the meeting with the, with the Chief. And that is a reminder to the public. Let's, let's focus on the simple things here. Lock your doors, lock your cars, keep lights on, and if you see something, call the police. It's as simple as that. The Neighborhood Watch groups are doing a great job, but let's keep those simple things in mind to, to the residents. Call the police and lock up. And that's a reminder that, uh, it, it's almost like, you know, with COVID, wash your hands, social distance, all those things. It's something that just has to be reiterated over and over again. And, um, that was a simple takeaway from our meeting that I think the public needs to hear over and over again.
And under no circumstances should we be approaching anyone or
That's right.
bumping anyone. Let the police do the job, okay?
Exactly.
Paul, I saw your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. And, uh, I would also like to reiterate, uh, Chris, thanks for the, uh, thanks for the kind words at the beginning. I think they were, uh, thoughtful and, and on point. So, thank you for that. I had two items, Madam Chair. The first is, um, on the auto theft. I wanted to just, you know, I wanted to put it out there and, uh, you know, for those who might not know, I'm one of those victims of the auto theft in our town from this year. You know, this past July, I had, my home was invaded. Somebody came into my house, into my garage, went through my personal belongings and my vehicles, and opened my garage and left, left my home with my wife's car. You know, this, this shook my family to the core for quite a long time. I mean, it's only been some months, but, you know, when something like this happens to you, it's, it's pretty, um, it's pretty, it's pretty tough. And, and, you know, when you have, um, a significant other, a wife, or kids, and you see, you know, the things that they're doing and how they react and how they're worried about it, it's not easy. So, I, I understand what's going on in our community, and I understand why people want to, um, do the things that they're doing to, uh, to try to, uh, you know, dissuade or make Southington a place that is not, um, not easily, uh, taken by some of these people who are doing this. So, um, I, I want to thank the Neighborhood Watch. I think it's a great thing. I'm really happy that, um, they've made contact with our, our Police Department, and they're getting, uh, you know, the right, the right coaching and the things to do. And, and again, you know, um, we, we have to be really careful in not taking matters into our own hands. You know, it's, uh, as much as we sometimes want to feel like we're doing that, um, I can say firsthand that I've had a great experience with the Southington Police Department. The night, um, in the middle of the night, when it happened for me and my family was awakened, um, they were very good. They were kind. They were gracious, but they were, uh, expeditious in helping to locate the vehicle, um, uh, helping us to locate the vehicle and get it recovered very quickly. Um, so, uh, and, and then throughout the after-process, uh, the days and weeks ahead, there was constant communication about, um, some of the things that were going on, um, that, that they were keeping us involved in. So, I, I wanted to thank the Southington Police Department as well for all their efforts. I know they don't do this just for me or for any of you or, um, you know, any one person in our town. They do it for everybody. Uh, and they do it across the board. They, you know, they are, uh, working hard. I know that, um, from what I've heard, i- that, like Chris said, um, you know, we couldn't be more impressed at, at, uh, the plans that they, that they are working on day in and day out to keep our community safe. I will say that, um, I'm hopeful that this also gives us an opportunity, uh, to reflect, not only on, you know, uh, the things that we can do as neighbors and community members, but also that our state can do to help us. You know, I think, you know, we've heard and seen on, um, different communications throughout, uh, you know, the, the news outlets over the last couple of years, that there are laws that are out there that also, you know, could be looked at in the future. And, um, you know, how can we take what we've learned in the past and we've built off of? And how do we make it better to, to further protect ourselves in the future? And I'm hopeful that, um, that is also something that, as we learn more from this, that we can, that we can look at in the future. My second item, Madam Chair, is I'm, I'm very happy, um, to report and, uh, wanted to thank, uh, the American Legion, um, the Town Manager and the Town Staff, and, uh, Megan Danko and her family. The last meeting we had before the holiday, I had mentioned that we were gonna have a very small flag-raising ceremony, um, at Town Hall. Uh, Megan Danko had the idea to, to do this, uh, with her, uh, with her family. And, uh, we got a, a flag donated, and, uh, we raised it. Uh, we had the, the great help of the American Legion who helped us ensure a proper ceremony. Uh, and, uh, we honored the military folks who were not able to be home for the holidays, uh, during that ceremony. And what we'll do is we plan to lower the flag tomorrow ceremoniously with the American Legion. Um, they're gonna fold it properly for us, and we're going to ensure that it gets to the family so that they can have it as a, um, a memento of their good deed to the community and to those who served our country. Thank you, Madam Chair.
It was an honor to be there. It was wonderful. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have something.
That's Mike? Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Just to echo the sentiments by Mr. Palmeri, uh, I couldn't agree more. Our Southington Police is tip-top. I'm looking forward to, um, when they make some arrests. And I'm also looking forward to see what happens to some of these folks who, uh, get arrested. So, I'm very interested in that. Um, as some folks know, I do work for, for the, for the judicial branch here in the state of Connecticut. So, I put some feelers out to some of the people that I work with to find out. I know there was a diversionary program that was supposed to take place about a year and a half ago for these particular types of incidences. And I understand that that diversionary program has not been set off the ground yet, so, which I'm a little concerned about and a little confused about. I understand that the pandemic may have something to do with it. But I'm trying to get some answers as to what's gonna happen to, uh, folks that are arrested for doing this. Um, we've heard there's, uh, they're youngsters. We've heard they're adults. Uh, I'm very, um, interested in seeing what is stopping folks from doing this. And if there's nothing, then we're in for a long haul, you know? Um, I think it's a shame that we have to, you know, park our cars inside our garage and take our keys out and lock the doors inside our garage. Um, that's a real problem for me. So, but then again, if, uh, individuals are getting away with stealing automobiles or breaking into automobiles, it's never gonna stop. So, um, I think it's, it, it'll behoove us to find out what's happening down the line when someone is actually caught and arrested. Well, that's what I'm looking forward to finding out.
And, Michael, we had a little bit of a discussion amongst ourselves, also saying that there's certain things that we as a council can do if, uh, someone is, uh, apprehended in town, uh, that we as a town, as a council and as, as a community, uh, need to have a presence in that courtroom. We need to let the, uh, the judge and, uh, the prosecutor know that we are, we want to seek justice for those people that have lost their car, those, those feelings that, uh, feeling victimized that they're going through, as Paul so eloquently said. Um, so, we, we have talked about that we should also be ready to stand for this community in the area where we can, you know, uh, besides being on the Neighborhood Watch, that, that we would make ourselves available for, uh, the court and the prosecutor to let them understand the victim's impact, uh, on a situation like this in the town as well as standing with the victims on this. So, I know we talked about it.
That's right. That's right, Victoria. I agree with you 100%. So, we'll see how that pans out. And the only other thing I had is, um, a broken record, but, um, shop local, the holidays are over. Uh, I do know some local businesses in town had a little, had a little bonus with the, with the holidays, with gift cards. But now that it's January, it becomes a slow time of year. And, um, you know, uh, fast food is good, but supporting local is better. Um, you know, uh, support our local restaurants, support our local small businesses. Uh, they need us now more than ever. That's it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Madam Chair, on the, as a follow-up to Mike's comment and, and your comment, would it behoove us to ask the Town Attorney today? Uh, you know, I know that the Neighborhood Watch was instrumental in, uh, in reporting, uh, the, uh, recent arrest that's out there. Can we ask the Town Attorney to help us, uh, follow up on that with however that case is being prosecuted and ensure that the, the, the fruit of the labor of our community and our Police Department are, uh, being followed through on?
I, I think that's very important, and, uh, what I'd like to do
And all of them. Not just one, but all of them.
All of them. Uh, what I'd like to do is filter through the Town Manager and to, uh, uh, so that he can also, his office and, and, um, Attorney Taylor, Taylor's office can keep us informed of the status of these, these cases as they come up. And, uh, uh, I think that's a good idea. So, Mark, can we rely on you for that? And Jeremy?
Yeah, normally, normally, uh, what'll happen is if you're, if you're a victim, you get notified. But I'm not sure. We'll have to double-check, and I'll leave it up to Jeremy. Uh, town itself, when it comes to a, um, a vehicle theft, may not be a quote-unquote victim under the statute, but, um, we could certainly stay abreast of the cases. That's, uh, that's something that Jeremy could do right on the computer. All the, all the criminal cases, as Mike knows very well, are all on the computer. But, um, he'll have to double-check to wit, to make sure that we can, I'm not sure the Town Attorney can give a victim's statement when it's not town property, but Jeremy will check on that.
I, I understand completely. Thank you, Jeremy. If, if you could just keep us informed, that would be
Just, just the mere fact that, you know, I, I, I understand the press is on our meeting tonight. Just the mere fact, uh, that the community knows and, uh, folks know that are thinking of doing something, we're gonna be involved. We're gonna follow the cases, and, you know, we're not gonna be terrorized.
That's great.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, everybody. Are there any other Councilman of Communications? Tom Lombardi?
Yes. Oh, Val, please, go ahead. I, I had one, one other thing. My original comment was only
Go ahead, Tom.
Okay, thank you. The other item I have, um, on a, on a brighter note, I'm usually announcing this earlier in the year, but I have some positive news to share from the YMCA. And it luckily, for the rest of, uh, the eight members of the council, you will have the opportunity to join me on February 27th for the 16th Annual Polar Plunge.
Oh, yeah.
So, this is something that is a, is a fun event every year. It raises over $60,000 for the YMCA for, for kids to attend camp in the summer. So, I'm just gonna run through briefly the, the teams this year. Uh, the, the featured team is Hartford Healthcare. That's gonna be Karen Fasano and Gary Havican. Uh, we have Team YMCA, Team Cheshire YMCA, Team Southington Police, Southington Fire Department, Board of Ed, Southington Politicians, which is all of us on this call. Plus, I'm, I'll, I'll follow up with an email to the rest of the, the, uh, elected boards. Team Southington, HR Manager Michelle Passamano is running that team. Team Lake Compounds, the Leaping Ladies, and the SHS Football Team. So, be on the lookout. Uh, I'm sure many of our friends and family will be posting donation links. And let's, uh, let's try to support the YMCA for this great event.
Yes, Councilman Pulis, it's on.
Actually, and now, now that Councilman Chaplinsky has, has, uh, he, he always seems to have a business trip come up around this Polar Plunge weekend.
Yeah, no China this year.
If I'm out of town that weekend, I'll be sure to give you a check, Tom. I, I don't know. I think I have a, I think I have to be somewhere, but I'll, I'll, if I'm here, I'll be there. But if I'm out of town, I'll give you a check.
Thank you.
Tom, I meant, you said, you said July 27th?
No.
Oh, February. I'm there.
I'm just very happy that Acting Chief Paul is with us tonight because we certainly, uh, would want our emergency folks helping us out.
That's right. That's all I had. So, I'll, I'll send an email out to you guys.
Very good. Anybody else have any Councilman of Communication? Yes, Val?
I'm sure. Um, so, Tom, I'll be sending you a donation, okay?
Thank you.
I'll tell you right now. So, I just wanted to, um, I know, maybe on a, on a lighter note, too, you know, there, it's been such a dark time with, uh, with COVID and, and with some of the things that are going on. So, I was really struck by the, um, the, the different acts of kindness that have been highlighted in the paper and that we're seeing in emails. Um, I know Assistant, um, or Acting Chief, uh, Fire Chief Jimmy Paul had sent us a letter about Janet Mellon and, and her staff at Community Services. Um, the Luminary's by Morgan McNamara. And then there was, uh, Kristen Foremeister, I think her name is, that, um, came up with the Adopt a Child Program, um, for the state. And then she had a group from St. Thomas Church jumped on that. And, you know, they were delivering gifts, uh, themselves. So, you know, just in, in all this darkness, I think it's so important that we find some light. And, um, it's just so wonderful to see that our community, and I'm sure there's so many more acts of kindness out there, you know, large and small, that we don't know about. So, I just wanted to say to our Southington community, um, you know, that it's, it's, uh, very comforting, I think, for all of us to see. So, I, I just wanted to, you know, bring that up.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Val.
Thank you, Val. That's great. Uh, anybody else?
Madam Chair, I, I have one quick comment.
Sure.
This is Bill. Um, I just wanted to comment, um, kind of changing gears here, but the tax bill extension?
Yeah.
Um, I, I just do want to say, I heard a lot of positive things recently, um, really showing that Southington's a business-friendly community. Um, so, you know, the bill may not help the average person who has their taxes paid as part of their mortgage payment, but for small businesses, for landlords, or people who don't have their taxes escrowed, um, you know, it really helps. It gives another quarter for cash flow. Um, and it's not just, I, it's just not just that this council passed it, um, through, you know, Mark's leadership, but really, it's the way our town staff is explaining to people. Um, you know, I have, I, I've heard from people who own properties in multiple towns, and they basically said, "I'm getting nothing from such and such a town," but Southington's right on, right on point. So, I really do want to tip my cap, um, you know, especially in this, these times. Um, not, it, it's really important. So, I, we, we're doing a great job of it, and it's really helping people.
Absolutely. Mark, thank you for your leadership in that and, uh, for the town staff. That's, uh, that's wonderful. Chris?
Can I just ask for clarification? Was, wasn't this part of the Governor's executive
Can I just ask for clarification? Wasn't this part of the governor's executive?
Another. Yeah, this is actually, I'm sorry. You want me to? Yeah, this was actually a new executive order that was just passed right, right before Christmas, I believe. And the executive order said that the, any council that, that approved this back in July, which of course this council did, the manager has a right to extend it without further action of the council, as long as there was, as long as there was no objection from the council. Obviously, I emailed all of you to make sure that it was okay and all of you were, were very much in favor of it. So I did extend it on behalf of the council. So the governor allowed us to do that without a formal vote of the council, as long as the, the official approved of it. So I was happy to do it based upon, obviously, the council's approval.
Great. Thank you. Okay, we're all set to move on then. Okay. The report of special committees. Paul, will you take open space, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, I've got a few items to report. It was a light, a light meeting due to the holidays, but you know, we've, we've had a few properties in 2020 that the committee has worked through our process to.
Paul, can you, can you put your voice a little higher on your, on your computer? It's, it's kind of soft.
Sure, let me move this a little closer. How's this?
Better, I think.
We've had a number of properties that we've, that we've asked through the committee and also through town council for execution. So that's great. Some, some of the things that we're continuing to work on that we discussed in the last meeting. We have a couple of roof projects on some barns as part of our farm heritage. An open space activity, the Graski Barn and the Leaf Barn, which we have plans over the next couple of years to patch those up. We have some active leaves, leaks in some of them and, and have some deterioration in some of the barns. So those are on our list to, to remediate as part of our roof process. We, property maintenance was discussed and you know, some of the markings on the parcels that we own, as well as the hang that we do in the, in the fields, that, that is in good order and ready for 2021. On the farm heritage specifically, we have some needs for some field maintenance at Leaf and also plans to discuss this upcoming meeting. Solar on the roof at Leaf. So we're going to be looking for support there in the future to try to bring some solar panels there to reduce electrical costs. So more to come on that. And then Chris has been working on the, as well as town staff on the relocation of the shed to Pleasant View. It looks like I received a communication today that here in the next couple of weeks, we have a plan to try to get some additional help on that and hopefully get that over to the Pleasant View site shortly. And then looking to next year, one item is we, you know, we want, we're looking for some volunteers to hopefully help us with the restoration of the front entrance of the Pleasant View site next to the Apollo with some, you know, a new fence through some volunteer efforts and also a new entrance way. So that's it, Madam Chair, for open space and less. Chris or Jim feel anything?
Paul, can I just ask? Can I just ask a question? Because I had to leave a little bit early from that meeting. I had submitted. As you know, I met with Mark Ramsey. We have a, a wish list, if you will. The amount that Leaf does for this community is immeasurable. Mark Ramsey really, each and every year just goes above and beyond for, for our town, our students, our, our residents of any age, really. There were some items that, that potentially would be part of the budgeting process. So I don't know, Paul, maybe you and I can meet with the town manager and see about any possibilities of adding some items in the manager's budget.
Yeah, we did, I did ask staff to provide that to Mark. Mark, are you sure if that made that to you yet? But if it hasn't.
Yeah, actually, I have an update on that. I took, I took your two roofs out of your budget and put them in my budget. So you'll, you should have the funds you need. I have a, well, you all know because you voted on it. We have a townwide roof program, which I'm doing over several years. So I added the two roofs that you're talking about into my program. So now it's off your budget. So the money you had allocated toward that for your budget is no longer in your budget. So I believe Dave Lavalley told me that you should have enough money to do what you need to do.
He's going to update.
Fantastic.
Sitting on that, Chris.
Yep, that's, well, thanks, Mark.
Oh, there was a stipulation that, the stipulation that the two of you will be on the, the roof July and August, you'll be doing the tarring on the roof. So I'll see you then.
I'll hold the rope. Chris, I'll hold the rope while you're dangling.
Shashay style.
Yeah. No, but we do, we also, Chris, to your point, there is a, a grant also as part of that maintenance that we're looking to, to work on. And that's something that I need to follow up with you on the week. Mark's looking to apply for a grant this week on fixing up one of the fields. So that's, that's kind of ties into the list that you put together. I'll shout it out.
Awesome. Thanks.
Very good. Any other questions for Paul and open space and Chris? Hearing them, let's move on to Public Works.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. We had our meeting on January 6th and somewhat an uneventful meeting, very brief, but a couple of items to discuss. Under the police, the police roof at the police station is completed. There were some repairs that had to be made. And the company that, that, that was hired to do the roof came right out and they were very fast to fix the problems. The chief is very happy with, with their services. The Bulky Way Station. I don't know, there are a couple of people I think that still have some microphones open. I'm hearing some background music. Not music, but just noises. Did everyone just mute their mics if they're not talking? Thanks. Okay. So I get distracted very easily. Sorry about that. Okay, so there's going to be a new sign in system for the Bulky Ways Transfer Station. And that's going to begin on, on February 6th. This is more advanced and this, the new system will have, will be easier to keep track of the number of cars and, and can very well help us to determine if there is a potential for anyone abusing the system. So we're looking forward to that taking place. And from the engineering department, the trail from Lazy Land to Plainville is, the DOT is finally finishing up. There are some impacts to wetlands, so this has to be addressed. So, but Jim Gropone is pretty confident that hopefully by early to late spring, most of this stuff will be completed. So we'll be able to get some work done on that hopefully this year. The Plantville Center improvements, Mr. Pulis had asked for some renderings because I know it's been a while. We haven't, you know, we had a bunch of meetings over the last year, but we really haven't had much advancement, unfortunately. I'm once again going to blame the DOT. They were kind of short staffed throughout the pandemic, but now they're back to work and they're, they're finishing up as well. They're just about ready for the 100% or the 95% plans. CROG also has to review the plan. So more to follow on that hopefully by the next meeting. And the Spring Street to Queen Street Turning Lane, there were some drainage issues that were repaired and we are very close on that as well. Final reviews are happening now. So I know we're all looking forward to that turning lane happening on Spring Street onto Queen. A company was selected to repair the Spring Street Bridge. ACOM is the company that was selected. They've done some work for us in the past and the town was very happy with their services. So they've been selected to repair the bridge on, on Spring Street. And our work group to add either some lighting or some, or some security to the, to the trail has kicked off. There's a few members from our committee on that. And so they're going to be reporting out at the Public Works meetings monthly. So I'll be able to report out to the town council how that's going. There any questions? Anything Mr. Pulis or Mr. Chaplinsky wanted to add?
I have a comment, Councilman.
Yes, please.
First, I just want to thank the Public Works Committee and, and the town manager for, for following through on that software issue. I know this has been a few years and when, when the public works in the past has asked for information or the council, it was always able to be obtained, but I always got the feeling that Annette had to do a little bit more work than she should have. And so that's good to hear that we're upgrading the software and it's going to provide more, better information and easier to obtain. And secondly, I believe there's a change, slight change with the 2021 transfer station passes. We now have to go to the highway department. Do you have the specific dates when people can start going for that? Or maybe the town manager?
Mr. Shorok, that's been going on for a few months now, but Mark.
Absolutely. What, obviously it started with the pandemic, but it turned out to work very, very well for us. As you know, the clerk's office is inundated with many, many other things. So we shifted that responsibility over to the highway department. So that's been going on now for about two, two to three months. But from now, starting, starting now, the only place you'll be able to get your passes will be the highway department. They're open from 7:30 to 3:30 and they're on Delible Drive off of Mulberry Street, just a little, almost kitty corner from the AquaTurf. They're, obviously your passes are still good until the end of March, but we'll, we'll, we'll report when the new passes are going to be ready.
Right. And make sure to get your passes updated. So you are not turned away at the transfer station like some of us.
I wonder who that could ask.
Like, like myself earlier in the year.
Well, there's plenty of room to turn around. They got that nice area on the side. So you turn and get out of there.
Thank you for that. Good stuff.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lombardi. Thank you, Madam Chair. You're muted.
Can I assess?
Val, sure.
Thanks. Sure. On the, the work for Plantville, is, is that going to be, is it looking good for the spring? Or is it going to be pushed maybe to the summer? Have you heard anything on that?
We're, Val, we're hoping the, the sign offs are just about done. It was DOT. DOT is the reason that everything's behind. And then CROG has to take a look at it. And the problem that Mark, I'm not sure of the schedule of CROG these days, but I think they meet every other month. So I'm not sure when their next meeting is, but they have to do a sign off as well, which may delay things a little bit, but we're hoping.
Yeah, we're still, we're still hoping to, we're still hoping to go out to bid in the spring. Originally it was going to be late winter, early spring. Now we're probably looking at late spring. But obviously we hope to turn around as possible because from a town standpoint, as, as the chair just mentioned, we've been ready all along. But as you know, with COVID and people working out of their homes at the state level, it's been very, very difficult. So we're hoping to have to go out to bid in late spring and turning that around relatively quickly for construction to start soon thereafter.
Great. Thank you.
You're muted.
There you go. Well, let's move on to the town manager's report. Thank you, Paul.
I think you have.
Madam, yeah, Madam Chair, as a point of order, can I report on sewer?
Oh, I'm sorry, Bill. That's right.
Well, I guess ironically what I'm going to report is that our, so our meeting actually is Thursday. So I don't have an update from the last meeting. So I don't know if we can just carry this agenda item to the next meeting and I'll update then.
Sure.
No problem.
That'd be fine. Any questions for Bill? Okay, now we can move on, Mark, to the town manager's report. I apologize.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening to everybody. As Mr. Del Santo mentioned, the first item has the bridge consulting contract. This isn't the company that's actually going to construct it. That's going to be at your next vote. It will be at your next meeting. This is the one that we use for consulting. The state of Connecticut and the federal government, which obviously pays the vast majority of these, require a consultant to be there and check. What they're doing is they're almost like our clerk of the works. They're there to make sure that the construction is, it happens the way it should. So AECOM, as Mr. Del Santo mentioned, is the recommendation. That's for $406,000. Also, the Public Works Committee is going to, has already approved of the construction, but because of the timing issues, I have to wait till the next meeting for you to approve the construction part of it. So that's for AECOM and therefore your construction consultants. Any questions on that? The next item I have is everyone's favorite time of year, which is the budget season. Most of you already know this schedule, but for the general public, let me go through how budget works in the town of Southington. I won't discuss the BOE budget. That's a separate thing and, and that's really not in your hands until May. So let's, let's talk about what the government budget needs. Every department head has to submit their budget to me by the 8th of January, which was last Friday, which they, which they've done, except for a couple of department heads who report directly to board. You have to have a board meeting. So I'll get those this week. I will then meet with every department head, which I will this week and next week and go over their budgets. We will then, the finance director and I will go over the budgets. We'll go over all the revenue figures. And then we're going to wait obviously to the second Wednesday of February when the governor gives his speech and will recommend what state aid the town of Southington will get. That's important because that's a very big revenue item for us. So once that happens, I put my budget together and I, I report it to the Board of Finance no later than February 18th. At that point, the Board of Finance will take a look at it. We'll meet with myself, the finance director and other department heads, and then we'll hold a public hearing. Now, I, I have it. Normally we hold our public hearing at Apollo Middle School, but depending where we are in the COVID stage, it may be a public hearing, totally webbed system. So at this point, it's scheduled at Apollo, but we're going to play that by ear, depending on what happens by March, March 1st. After the public hearing, the Board of Finance then does its workshops and they will vote on a recommended budget to the town council on March 31st of this year. At that point, the council then reviews it and the council will hold a public hearing. Right now, that's scheduled for the municipal center, but like I said before, depending on where the world is in April, that may also be a WebEx meeting. And that's for April 26, 2021. The council first further deliberates and then by charter, you must act on the budget no later than May 10th, 2021. You then pass a budget, which includes not only the government budget, but it's also include the capital budget and the Board of Education budget and the smaller budgets like animal control and sewer, et cetera. At that point, you pass a budget, it goes to the Board. The Board of Finance uses calculations to figure out what the new mill rate is in the town of Southington. So that's where we're going. We're just in the beginning stage and we have several months of work ahead of us. Answer any questions you have there.
Anybody have any questions? Very clear, Mark.
Oh, thank you.
One comment. Through the top manager, I would just make the comment or suggestion that we plan on broadcasting the presentations via some sort of digital method, WebEx, even if it's held in person, because I think there might be residents that would want to join in on, on the informational sessions, whether we decide to have them in person or not. So I, I would suggest.
Which sessions are you talking about, Tom?
The, the budget hearings that, that you mentioned in your schedule.
Okay. Yeah, the, the budget, normally what we would do is the, the budget hearings for the department heads you're talking about. Because the, the Board of Ed and the, and the department heads, we could, we could see if we can WebEx those meetings.
Like, yeah, the public hearings, the one on March 1st.
Those are absolutely going to be, if they're not, if they're not going to be in, if they're not in person, but I, I agree with you, even if it is in person, we'll do a WebEx also for people.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's all.
Yeah, that's no problem.
The municipal center, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, the municipal center upgrade is perfect for that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Don't get me started, Paul.
Yeah, I just want to clarify. Tom, are you talking about the workshop sessions? So not the public hearings, but when the people start to workshop the budget? Is that what you're suggesting? We should live stream? Because I would agree with that. I'm not sure those workshops are always live streamed.
If it were for people to do it, I think the more, the more people that can have input and information, the better.
I, I couldn't agree more, Councilman Lombardi. If we could do that, I'd like to see it happen.
Yeah, the Board of, the Board of Finance workshops themselves are never on, they're, they're not meetings, they're workshops. So they're never televised. But if you're talking about obviously all the public hearings and all that, whether, whether we have them in person, they're going to be in person and on TV, whether it be WebEx. As we're all set up to do that, but we have to get clearance to do that for the, from the health district. If we don't, then we're going to have everything done unfortunately like we're doing it right now.
Hey, well, we'll see.
Yep. The, the next item I have, and I'm very happy to say, obviously COVID had slowed this down, is our rank and file union, which is the town hall and all our outer buildings. And I have come to an agreement on a budget, excuse me, on a, on a union contract. This is a long time in coming mainly because of COVID, not because of anything else. With that being said, they have agreed to the, to the same contract terms that the other unions have agreed to prior to the COVID situation. So you have the synopsis in front of you. Year number one is 2.25, year number two is 2.25, and year number three is two for a total of 6.5. They have agreed to the same increases in insurance that the other unions have done, and they've also agreed to the increase in the prescriptions. As with all union contracts, we look over all the job titles. And there were several, to be perfectly honest with you, that the job titles were so old and the people were doing substantially more than their job title. So we'd agreed to bump up, I think there's six of them, six titles total from, to a different grade. So with that in mind, obviously, I don't have to tell you how proud I am of my employees over the last, the last year working through this, but I'm very happy to say that we have a collective bargaining agreement in place. Of course, with your ratification, which would run through June. Of course, with your ratification, which would run through June 30th, 2022. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
I really just had a statement, Mark, and that is I, I want to just thank the rank and file and because I think we see that it was a real, a real team effort to get to this point. And I appreciate they work so hard. They're right at the front. They're right at the front. They, they receive our, our citizens. They help our citizens. They walk through difficult things with our citizens and we just appreciate all of their effort. And even in this negotiation, we, we appreciate their willingness to work with us and come to this conclusion. So I just wanted to extend that to our, to our town employees.
Any other questions, Madam Chair?
I do not. Does anyone else have any? I see none, Mark. Go ahead.
Okay, the next item I have, for many of you, I bring this to you every year. The EMPG grant, which is the Emergency Management Grant, which is, which is used to offset emergency management salaries. Obviously, we have an emergency management director. I work in emergency management. Mr. Baker works in emergency management. So we fill out, I shouldn't say we, Lara fills out a very large form every year and the, and the state offsets some of that. Our average is somewhere around $40,000 each year. And we've been doing this, oh, probably for the last 10 or 12 years. So any questions on that? Okay, all right. We do have executive session tonight, Madam Chair. There'll be no, no action outside of executive session. And that's my report.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for the town manager? Thank you, everybody. Attorney Taylor, it's your turn. Jeremy, I think your mic is on. I can't hear you. Nothing yet.
There he is.
No, I don't think so. Paul, there's nothing you can do on your end, huh?
No, his, his mic is unmuted, so I'm, I'm unsure why we can't hear him.
He may have to log off and log back on.
Or maybe the volume is down. I don't know.
If you have a headset or something, Jeremy, maybe you can un, just go through your computer mic.
Or the other thing, Jeremy, maybe you can call in. Keep the video, but call in so we can hear you.
If you want to do that, yep, yep. We'll wait.
Madam Chair, you want me to pinch hit?
Uh, yes, if, if you could, Jeremy, that's all right. It happens to all of us at one time or another.
All right, the, the first, the first item is an 824 referral from Planning and Zoning back to the Town Council. At your last meeting, you, you sent it to the Planning and Zoning. You saw that in here. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously approved the purchase for $45,000. The second item would be the actual vote on the contract itself, which was in your packet. The next item is a referral for a contract for 766 South Main Street. That's a referral to Planning and Zoning. Obviously, Planning and Zoning under 8-24 would look at it and then send back a recommendation to your board.
Very good. Any questions on?
No questions.
I, I do have a question. I, I don't know if I should wait for, for.
Why don't you wait for the action part of it? That way you can ask it to the town attorney.
I'll wait for the action, then I'll bring it up to the town attorney at that point.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right. Well, let's go into public communication right now. And hopefully Jeremy Sound is going to come on and we're going to be really good. Public communication, Paul, we're going to do anybody on the computer first and then we'll follow up with anybody on the phone. Is that correct?
That's correct, Madam Chair.
Okay, so go ahead, Paul. You take it over.
Yep. If there's anybody that's on the computer that can unmute themselves and would like to speak during public communications, please go ahead and do that now. Unmute yourself and please go ahead and give your name and address for the record. Anybody on the computer, give your name and address for the record and unmute yourself if you'd like to speak during public communication. Okay, Madam Chair, I don't, I don't see any phone callers. But if there are any phone callers that we don't see and you would like to speak during public communications, press star six now to unmute yourself and speak during public communications. Star six for anybody who's calling in. Okay, Madam Chair, seems that nobody's going to speak tonight.
Okay. So we will continue. I thought I saw Jeremy back on, but I guess, oh, I think he's on the phone. Is, is Jeremy on the phone? No. Anyway, he's still silent. We can't hear him. Okay. So we're going to continue. Let's go to old business. Action on the bridge consulting contract. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Madam Chair.
I'll second.
And Chris seconded it. Very good. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Are there any opposed?
Sorry, I was, I was muted, but I am a yes vote. Sorry.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Hearing none, and I don't believe there's any abstentions. We will mark this as a yes, unanimous yes vote. Thank you. On the action for the emergency management resolution, may I have a, a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the, the resolution set forth in our package.
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
You're going to second that? So all those in favor?
Roll, roll call, please.
Oh, yes, okay. Madam Clerk, we can call the roll, please.
Del Santo?
Yes, yes.
Hello? Yes. Deetze? Morelli?
Yes.
Womarite?
Yes.
Ullis?
Yes.
Lombardi? Chaplinski?
Yes.
Triano?
Yes, it's unanimous for that resolution. Thank you, everybody. Okay, Chris, you're going to recuse yourself.
I need to.
And on item E, I believe. Is that correct?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Okay, so let's move on to item D. An action on the 824 from, from Planning and Zoning for the property on 196 Prospect Street. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve. Del Santo.
Okay, and Paul, you're going to second that? Okay, very good. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Can I just make a discussion? Just be, because I don't, I don't remember if this was said here or an executive session or whatnot. But now that it's public, the great piece, the great part about this piece of land is it's adjacent to existing open space and an elementary school. So there is parking and access to this piece of land. So just want to put that on the record before we vote.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other comments? Yeah, Paul?
Yeah, I would just echo that. You know, the, the, the Oceana School property that exists today, prior to this, currently has a nature of, part of their curriculum that they use their existing property for, that brings the children outdoors. They have actually seating and areas to stand and discuss with nature components labeled. This actually is butt up. So it will expand the opportunity for the students to, to use even more areas and explore maybe some of the water course that's there. And it also is a buffer along a significant portion of the Oceana property. So, you know, hopeful that maybe some of the other schools might consider using some of that in the nature preserve that's there in the future or any resident that wants to. And I want to say a thank you to the Donahue family for engaging with us and working with us on a, on a price, I think that was, that was good for all parties. So thank you.
Very good. Yes, Jim?
I just wanted to echo that, that I, I think for all those reasons, it was an excellent, excellent purchase for us. And again, I think the Donahue family did us a favor by working favorably for the town and the community. So thanks again to, to everybody.
Very good. All right, are we ready to move the motion? All those who approve of, signify by saying aye?
I just wanted to echo that, that I, I think for all those reasons, it was an excellent, excellent purchase for us. And again, I think the Donahue family did us a favor by working favorably for the town and the community. So thanks again to, to everybody.
Very good. All right, are we ready to move the motion? All those who approve of, signify by saying aye? Anyone opposed to the motion? And we have one abstention from Chris Pulis. So we are unanimous and one abstention from Chris. Okay, action. We're on item, we're on item F now, I believe, right?
E, separate motion for E.
Yep.
The motion.
Pulis got to beat it.
The motion to approve the contracts for 196 Prospect Street.
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Okay, I think Val seconded it first. So, all right, so we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion?
Just for the record, it's $45,000, the contract.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Again, it's unanimous, however, Mr. Pulis has abstained from this. Item F, action on 824 referral from Planning and Zoning for 766 South Main Street. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to, to approve, send the 824 referral to Planning and Zoning for 766 South Main Street.
That, Madam Chair, Del Santo.
Del Santo's going to second it. Very good. Is there any discussion on this motion? Yes, Chris?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I just would like to take a moment to share some thoughts on the significance of this acquisition. To me, this is a win-win-win for the town and our residents. It's a win, I think, most importantly, because the town owning this parcel, it will give us the ability to address major traffic, safe, major traffic safety concern we have there, which, which is timely because we're about to enter a long-awaited safety improvement project in, in Plansville. It's a win because we're going to be able to improve and beautify an unsightly gravel lot in a historic part of our town. And it's a win because through beautification and safety improvement, I believe we're going to attract more people to the village of Plansville. Residents or visitors from out of town who will patronize local businesses and contribute to the economic development of the area. You know, I was thinking that there may not be superlatives to describe the features of this acquisition. It's not, it's not large compared to the recent open space acquisitions, nor is it a wildlife corridor or farmland with an orchard or roaming horses. But rather, I see it as a small little diamond yet to be polished into attractive, an attractive suburban feature that will improve the quality of life for our residents for the reasons I mentioned. And on one last note, I would be remiss if I did not personally thank the Zomer family on behalf of this council for working with us and our town staff over the last year on the sale, agreeing to a price of this important parcel. Our meetings were thoughtful. They never wavered from their vision of beautifying Plansville and supporting local businesses. They were firm that the intended use of the parcel should be a parklet. And ultimately, they agree, they're agreeing in this contract that we're sending over to Planning and Zoning for a price of nearly $26,000 less than its valued purchase. And that made it, that, that makes it more manageable for the town to acquire. You know, the Zomers have contributed for decades in Plansville. They introduced Halloween in the Village. They've decorated that corner a lot for many holidays over the years. They were involved in the, the Village Association and Christmas in the Village since their inception. And some of us who were here, all of us were here as young people, will remember the condemned grocery store that stood where the clock tower and the gazebo and the fountain are currently located. They worked with former Councilman Bill DiPaolo and a local developer to gentrify that into what it is today. I could go on and on, but I think these examples further evidence the Zomer family's legacy in Plansville. They have been committed for many years to the improvement of the area and for that, I'm grateful. I think as a council, we're grateful and I wanted to submit that to the record as we move this motion.
Very nice, Chris. Thank you. Are there any, any other comments on this? Tom, did you want to mention something?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a few comments that I, and, and, you know, I will agree with what Councilman Pulis just ended with in terms of the Zomer family and, you know, they're certainly great, great assets to the, to the Plansville and overall community. But just, let's keep one thing in mind. When we purchase lands or development rights or whatever it is, it, it shouldn't matter who's selling the land. We, we, we aren't buying this because the Zomers are selling it. We're buying it for the reasons that Councilman Pulis said at the beginning of his statement. For, for the reasons that we think it, you know, improvements for beautification and we think we can do some safety improvements. That's the reason we're buying it. We're not buying it because the Zomers are selling it. But I want to make one point to the council. When this comes back from planning and zoning, I think we should have some pretty direct answers on these, whether it be from the town attorney or the town manager. There, right now, there's a lot of parking going on there. And, and I want to make sure that when this closes in the name of the town, what are our specific rules that we're going to have down there? What's our timeline? So we should have that because we can't just have it continue operating the way that it is. So tho, those are the comments that I, that I'll, I'll put on the record. And, and it is also, you know, there's been a lot of talks about safety down there, about drunk people driving in late at night and, and things like that. So let's make sure that any designs, obviously, you can't design for drunk drivers, but let's, let's make sure that we're, we're really factoring all those things in. So, but those are the comments I, I just wanted to add there.
Thank you, Tom. Are there any other comments from any council people? Yes, Valerie?
Madam Chair, I just had a question on the contract. I don't know if the town attorney is able to speak with us yet, but maybe Mark can answer it as well. So in the contract, we have that as a condition of the transfer. The deed's going to have specific language for the intended use of the, of the parcel. Is, so is the language in the contract, is that pretty much what will be on the deed?
Jeremy, are you on?
Can, can you hear that? She wanted to know if the, the language in the contract would be also stipulated in the deed.
And I guess the reason I'm asking that is to piggyback a little bit on Councilman Lombardi, the, the issue with the improved, you know, improving the, the safety, the traffic safety there. Because that will be, it will be a specific condition of the, of the transfer. And then it also looks to be that if it's ever going to be changed, it would be by vote of, of the Town Council.
Yeah, I could, I could answer. I mean, Jeremy's, if he's not on, I could answer that, obviously. I did read the contract. I didn't write it, but I read it. And I still have a little bit of legal knowledge left after not doing it for so long. But yes, to answer your question, that would be a re- that would be a responsibility of the Town of Suddington that if it changes from a parklet, I believe it's said in there, then it would be an affirmative vote at the council, five members in open session if they want to change it in the future, which is pretty standard for, we usually don't have to spell it out. But in this particular case, I think it was important for the property owners and the council that we do spell that out. So obviously, the council is the ultimate authority on all property of the Town of Suddington. So that would be a normal process. But to answer your question, that particular restriction would be on the deed in most cases. Jeremy, of course, would be the final authority on that.
Can you hear me at all?
Ah, there you are.
Yes, there you are. Go ahead, Jeremy.
Right after Mark finished all his big speech there, which he was, he was right on. So I'm sorry, I heard part of what you were asking, the specific language we were there about making it a partlet and having the Town Council vote if they wanted to change that. That would be something that we would have in the deed. It's in the contract, so that would be something that would be transferred into the deed.
Okay, and I think that's, as I said, getting back to Councilman Lombardi's concern about the safety, you know, at least it's in the deed and it's a condition of the transfer.
Sure, that would be something that a future council would have to take into consideration when they made a vote.
Just as an aside, the eventual design of it goes through the Public Works Committee and to the council. The design is being done internally. When we start the process, obviously, we'll give the green light, assuming the council moves forward with this project. We'll give that. But everything is going to be done staff-wise, which we may need some experts to help us out a little bit. And then like everything else we do, it has to go to the Public Works Committee for their input and then their recommendation to the council. The final design is, of course, in the council's vote.
Very good. Any other comments?
Thank you.
Before we bring it to vote, I'm going to ask for a voice vote on this, so everyone can speak their vote. That would be wonderful. So Chris in town, Chris made the motion. Tom seconded it, so let's take the vote.
Mike Santo.
Madam Chair, Del Santo. Del Santo was the second.
Oh, okay, thank you. Good. Okay, very good, Mike. I'm sorry. Okay, so let's move the motion. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll? Well, the option is to go forward with the 824 from Planning and Zoning. Go ahead.
Del Santo?
Yes.
Palo?
Yes.
Dietzick?
Morelli?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Japlinski?
Yes.
Meow.
Madam Chair, was that, Councilman Dietzick wasn't abstaining, I believe, right?
Yep.
I believe so, yes.
A tier of.
Okay, very good. Thank you, everybody. Moving on to appointments.
Tax refunds first.
Tax refunds first, you're right, Chris. That's right. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Madam Chair, thank you. Madam Chair, I would make a mention that we approved the tax refund that's outlined in our package.
Madam Chair, this is Bill's second.
Okay, very good. She's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, I believe. It passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody. Let's move on to the appointments, starting with item one, the Regional Health District.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mike?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Anne Marie Conady for the position, Regional Health District.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Paul. All those in favor, you better, yes, go ahead.
I'd like to nominate Kelly Morsy.
Okay, very good.
And?
Very good. Okay, thank you, Chris. Is there a second to Kelly Morsy, Chris Houless?
Madam Chair, I'll second.
Okay. Chris, I saw your hand, but now I'm going to call Val's for the second.
Vote about.
So what we're going to do on this, we're going to say the name of the person that we're voting for for this position. So Madam Chair, would you call, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Del Santo.
Conady.
DePaolo.
Morsy.
Dietzick.
Conady.
Morelli.
Abstain.
Morsy.
Houless.
Morsy.
Lombardi.
Conady.
Japlinski.
Conady.
Triano.
Conady. Anne Marie Conady has that position. Thank you, everybody. And I want to thank also Kelly. She's worked very hard in that position. I appreciate her time. All right, item number two, the Senior Citizen Commission.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Tom?
I'll put forth the name of Connie Pearl for the Senior Citizen Commission.
Madam Chair, I'll second that. Del Santo.
Very good. Are there any other names that we want to put forth? Okay, let's just go forward with all those in favor for Connie Pearl for the Senior Citizen Commission. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, it carries unanimously. Thank you. The, I'm going to need a table on the ethics alternate. May I have a motion?
So moved, Madam Chair. Del Santo.
Second. Thank you, Paul. All those in favor for a table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to that? There is none, so it's unanimous. Thank you. The cable, the cable TV Advisory Committee, one member?
Madam Chair, this is Jim.
Yep.
I'd like to put forward Michael Petrucci for that position.
Petrucci, do I have a second?
I'll second, Madam Chair. Del Santo.
Thank you, Mike. Very good. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you, everybody. So Michael will take that position. Also, on the Apple Harvest Advisory Committee, there is an opening because Barbara Roberts has stepped off. And I'd like to have a motion for that. Tom?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forth a name that is familiar to most of us on here working with the Apple Harvest, the name of Jim Champagne for the Apple Harvest Advisory.
I'll second.
Thank you, Chris. That's great. So we have Jim Champagne. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed to Jim? I don't think so.
Get him back in business at the Apple Harvest.
And that's going to be great. I just want to say that also on the Apple Harvest Festival Committee, there may be an opportunity if, we don't want to change the whole construction of the Apple Harvest Festival Committee, but sometimes you get people that have a great deal of knowledge in a certain area or whatever, and we can certainly consider that on both sides, on the Democratic side as well as the Republican side. If there's someone that we feel might want to walk alongside the Apple Harvest Festival Committee and give of their time and expertise, we can certainly do that and certainly consider those folks. It's already a very good committee, but we're always looking for new ideas and everything. So I just want to throw that out. We are, this is a committee that is quite active and it's a fun committee. So if we want to extend it at least till November, and then the person or persons would have to be reconsidered as a special seat. So anyway. All right, may I have a motion to go into executive session? I'm going to invite the members.
Madam Chair, could I do this one?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to have an executive session. It's going to be in three parts. The first part, we're inviting in members of the Library Board to discuss real estate. After they're excused, we're going to have the interim Fire Chief and the Chairman of the Fire Board to discuss personnel. And then after they're dismissed, we'll have the council, myself, and Attorney Taylor discussing a personnel matter, and then we'll adjourn.
So that's it. May I have a motion?
Move.
I see that Houless and Jim seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone, for coming out to our meeting, and we will not be coming back into regular sessions. We'll see you on the other side. Thank you, everybody.